Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It is nice, no rain. I know that press is happy about no rain.
Yes, we're happy.
He does a no rain dance.
That's right.
Well, we'll have Commissioner Harvey will do our invocation. We'll have Mr. Turner lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for today. Father, we just ask that everything we do today be honoring and glorifying you. A lot of hard work has been into this budget. And, Lord, let us just have our minds open today. Let us discuss freely for the benefit of the citizens of Putnam County. Father, we just thank you for our staff and the hard work that they've done. And we thank you that we have an opportunity to live in such a great county and a great state and a great country. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, just wanted to make sure everyone's aware this is going to be recorded. This is our budget workshop. So it's not... There'll be open discussion. So it's with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Suggs.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Yes, sir. Just want to start out this morning, if we could, and just kind of have a little conversation this morning before we get started. You know, we've... During the past nine months, ten months, and prior to that, you know, the commissioner's been struggling with millage rates, reserves, and the budget itself. And during the process of U5 seeking a new county administrator to come in, one of the things that was... Ms. Tappy just sent them on the rail. One of the thing that was paramount in all the discussions, I'm quite confident with all the candidates, was we need to bring back a responsible, balanced budget to the commissioners for FY 1819. Another challenge was that we need to lower the millage. We need to do all we can to no longer be reliant on reserves to balance our budget. And the third leg of that was to increase our reserves, as they had been dwindling over the years. I would tell you that the department heads and staff has worked probably over 200 hours on this budget presentation today. A lot of kudos need to be handed out to the department heads themselves. A lot of them had no idea that when they sat down in that chair in the budget meetings that they were going to be there for two and three days. But that's what we did. I'm proud of the effort that all of the staff has made. Your administrative staff has done an amazing job. Your department heads have done an amazing job. I think this budget is something we're going to be proud of. I think this budget will show you just the dedication and the hard work that went into this budget. As you know, we met with the constitutionals. We received the input from the constitutionals on what they needed this year to work within their structures. We've done subsequent meetings with them. They are all on board with helping us do what needs to be done for Putnam County. I will tell you, in working in a county environment for many years, this is a very collegial approach that we had here this year. The constitutionals have really worked well with your staff to help us this year in getting us where we need to be. What you're going to get today is a responsible, balanced budget with the caveat that this is going to change between now and September. The caveat being, in a perfect world, which I think we're seeing come together here in Putnam County with those that are involved, you're going to see a budget that may come back to you in September that will have you, give you an opportunity to maybe even reduce your millage a second time, okay? The budget you have in front of you today is balanced based off of a new millage rate, okay? So with that said, I just want to tell you that Mr. Reynolds, your Deputy County Administrator, and Ms. Papel, your Budget Officer, have done yeoman's work on this. They are to be commended. They have done a very good job of putting this budget together. I think, again, all the players that were involved have really stepped up to help us out this year. I want to commend the Honorable Tim Smith, the Honorable Tim Parker, the Honorable Charles Overturf, and the Honorable Sheriff Gator Deluch for all they've done this year. And they've made this process, what was a seemingly difficult process, a whole lot better because of their willingness to assist us this year. So I'm very proud of that relationship that we all share. So what you will also see in this budget is that your staff went through, your department heads, and anywhere and everywhere that we could create efficiencies, save dollars, in order to be able to decrease our budget, as well as our dependency on reserves and lower millage, was taken into effect. And again, that is a thank you to my staff. I think they've done a great job. So without further ado, I'd like to go ahead, and Mr. Reynolds, if you'll go ahead and pull up the first slide, this is what we're talking about. The first slide will show U5 elected officials, the constitutionals, and for those in the audience this morning, that we have gone through and we've reduced the millage rate. We have increased your reserves. And we're presenting you a responsible, balanced budget today without the use of reserves. So that was a task that was handed down to administration. And so we honored that task. We went to work, and we did a very good job on this budget. And with that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over now to Mr. Reynolds and Ms. Papel for their presentation. If you have any questions this morning, please feel free to ask Mr. Reynolds and Ms. Papel, and we'll do the very best we can to answer those questions and make this very workable workshop here this morning. Any questions, anything you might need, we're here to serve you folks and to make sure that we're all on understanding of what it is we're looking at here this morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Can everybody hear me? Is that a little better? Do I need to hold the microphone?
We can hear you.
All right, okay. Just making sure it's loud enough. Good morning, everyone. As Mr. Suggs said, first slide, this budget presentation will show that in this budget we've reduced the millage rate, increased reserves, as well as balanced the general fund budget without use of reserves. So the first slide is the countywide budget assumptions. First bullet point being, right now in the budget, we do not have any raises or cost of living increases for Board of County Commission employees built into the budget. We currently have no change in health insurance premium contribution amount for the employees, so that should remain the same. The employer contribution remaining the same as well. Proposed millage rate is 9.6622. That is a .227 mills decrease, or a 2.30 percent decrease from the current fiscal year millage of 9.8892. The proposed millage rate for the FAR MSTU is remaining at 1.1 mills. That is the same as the current fiscal year. The entire fund balance has been included per Florida statute, so each of the funds that has a budgeted amount has the fund balance budgeted into that budget in the past. That's been... It's been a little bit different than that. Some of the funds have had some of their fund balance budgeted into them, usually if it was to balance the budget, some of the fund balance, or the... Yeah, the fund balance was included in the budget as a balance forward to balance that budget. So on the next slide, it shows that we have 34 total funds with budgeted amounts. We have, of course, the general fund, 22 special revenue funds, three enterprise funds, two debt service funds, three capital project funds, and three internal services funds. The total countywide budget at this point in time is $121,974,991. That is an increase of almost $5 million from the current fiscal year. That's about four and a quarter percent. Again, the reason for that is because of the inclusion of fund balance. This next slide shows a comparison. On the left-hand side, the two columns are balance forward and revenues, and the large green column is expenditures and reserves for the current fiscal year. So you can see that in the current fiscal year, we had a balance forward between all of the different funds of the county of almost $14 million, with about $103 million in revenues. On the reserve side, we only had about $3 million budgeted expenditures of almost $114 million. Going into next fiscal year, you can see the balance forward and the reserves amount has grown significantly from the current fiscal year, and that is because we have included the fund balance in the budget. So you can see that the fund balance is $25 million, with the revenues of about $97 million. And then on the reserve side, we've got almost $19 million in reserves countywide, with expenditures of $103 million. So the difference being, even though the total budgets, total budget amount countywide has increased, the reserves and expenditures from this year to next year have shrunk by quite a bit, from $103 million in reserves to about $96 million, $97 million. And then on the expenditure side, $114 million down to $103 million. Yes, and we do expect that to increase by September. A pretty big portion of the decrease, and I think it might be on an upcoming slide, we'll look at it on an upcoming slide, is project funding, grant funding, usually in the public works. I think it decreased by about $8 million at this point. That is a lot of public works directors, Mr. Tompkins, different grants, you know, scop and scrap and all of these different projects. As we get closer to September, more projects will come in that we know that we're going to get, and we'll also know which projects from this year might carry forward into next year. So there will be some adjustments on that, so that may go back up. This pie chart basically shows the countywide budget by the different fund categories. So it shows, general fund is about 46 percent of the total county budget, and then it shows the breakdown of those other different kinds of different categories of funds that we have. Countywide revenues on slide number seven. It shows... This is countywide, of course. This is all funds, not just general fund. It shows the different categories of revenues that we bring in and the changes in those. You can see, one of the largest changes is balance forward at about $11.5 million, and that is because, as we've mentioned, the inclusion of the entire amount of fund balance in the budget. You can see that the intergovernmental revenue is down $9 million. That is the majority of those projects that I mentioned in relation to public works. And then various other changes in the other categories of countywide revenues. If anybody has any questions, feel free.
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Larry. You start.
Okay. Thank you very much. The fund balance inclusion of $11 million, and I do appreciate, that's a true accounting now of why haven't we done that in the past, carried those balances forward? I think that deserves a little explanation there. It's kind of something new we're doing this year. Ms. Papel?
It was just a policy in the past that needed to be corrected.
Okay. But this is going to show a true accounting now.
This is a true conservative estimate of the amount of funds we expect to have aggregated together, since this is a countywide picture.
Okay.
So this is BPP and general fund, and it's all of the different funds.
Sanitation. Sanitation, yeah.
The unrestricted fund balance in the enterprise funds.
Good. That explains... One other comment, and then one more question. We budget 95 percent of our expected revenues by state statute. If we collect more, 1 percent, 2 percent, then we could actually see our balance forward or balance ending at the end of the year be more than what we're projecting that to be.
Correct.
That is correct.
Property values, what did they go up in Putnam County? I did not write that number down in our beginning conversation.
I don't have the exact amount, but I believe it's about 6.5 percent.
6.5 percent? That's the end of my question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lavelle?
In reference to September being a key month, a lot of changes, especially with FDOT and the state and any of the programs that we participate with them in, how do their calendar years work to ours? I know a lot of time their appropriations and this sort of thing come out mid-year, Matt, and that sort of thing. Do they align themselves so they can work with us in our calendar year? I'm kind of confused there.
We do have built into this budget the appropriations that we know we're going to receive. For example, the water line extension, the money that we receive to improve the dispatch consoles at the sheriff's office. So that money is in the budget. But some of their other projects have varying timeframes throughout the year, and that'll be something that we...
That's my question, so it's not standard. September is not going to rain money.
Right.
That's what I'm asking. Okay.
And it will also be a big number of that, is we assume that all of the projects that we have going on right now will be done by September 30th. As we get closer to September 30th, you know, some of those projects might not be completed by September 30th, and so we'll have to decrease what we think we're going to spend this year and increase the budget for next year to take that into account, so.
I'd like to compliment both of you. This is... I mean, I'm learning stuff here this morning. It's clear, very clear. Thank you.
It should be as clear, always.
Right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
Do we have the FEMA refunds built into this yet that we have? So in addition to the revenues in here, any FEMA refunds that we get will be in addition to the revenues that we have built in here this morning, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I've asked this to you privately when we had our meetings. Coming out of the business world, I had accounts receivables. To me, FEMA reimbursements or other reimbursements are accounts receivables. Why can't we capture those numbers? I know Susan's dying over there.
I'll let the CPAs answer this one.
You don't have to talk.
Okay, but before you talk, I want to say that we could, by state statute, go out and borrow the money against those reimbursements coming in once they're obligated from FEMA. So if we can do that, because other counties have to do that, in the rural Florida, that don't have reserves to handle their costs, if we could count that money in as income, why could not we count the FEMA reimbursements as accounts receivable? Okay, Susan, I'm done. Sorry.
From the actual standpoint, not budget, but from an actual standpoint, we have a policy that we don't accrue revenues unless we think they're collectible within 60 days of year-end. So that's why we don't accrue a receivable on the actual books. Now, as far as from a budget standpoint, that would be more of a management call whether or not you want to put those in the revenues.
It wouldn't be proper.
But, okay.
But knowing, Mr. Chairman, knowing they're coming is good enough, because, you know, if we can budget without them, and then we get a $2.5 million refund from the deal, then we're further within budget, which means we can take that into consideration when we start setting millage rates at the... In a couple... At the meeting in a couple of weeks, that's when we set it. So a couple of weeks, we can take that into consideration too, and perhaps set it a little bit lower, as long as we can still budget it, knowing, maybe take a little less in reserves or something, knowing that that money's coming at some point in the future, we feel confident that it's coming sometime in the future. So, you know, that might get us...
Very, not that you didn't have a great idea, but unlike business, you know, if we don't get those reimbursements, we can't write them off. It's just, you know, our bottom line changes dramatically.
Well, I agree, but I'm 99.9 percent sure that we'll get funding from FEMA for... Now, if you have a $3 million...
Can I hold you to that?
Yeah, you can.
There was that 1/10 of 1 percent that they let themselves for now.
But we've historically, we've received money from FEMA for... And we're expecting that. It's not... We had a meeting the other day where we got the 75 percent. We got 12.5 from the state. We know something's going to come. Now, do we count the whole $3 million, or we count the whole... Maybe not. Maybe we count 1.5 million.
That's fair.
Maybe we counted a very conservative number that doesn't put us out there on the hook so bad.
Part of this problem is, in this conver... And I think it should be brought up in this conversation, is the $2.5 million that's been obligated and in the works to come back to us does not come back to general reserves. It goes back to the landfill to pay back the money that they took out of their sale construction that they had set aside. So that $2.5 million can't be used to bring the budget down, because it's not in that pot of money. It's in the landfill money, and the reason it was there was because they've been setting aside money the last few years to build the new sale. If we take that and transfer it into the budget, then we're not going to be able to build a new sale for the landfill sometime in the next four years when it needs to be built, whenever it comes time that it's to do that. So I thought that should be talked, discussed also.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Ms. Papel?
As your CPA, based on the uncertainty of when we would collect FEMA and state revenues and what amount they might be, because they don't always give us what we want, I would never recommend that you balance the budget, assuming those revenues.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I say, even if we don't use that number, we'll see a... Let's just say we don't use the number, and all of a sudden we get our reimbursement, and the money goes back to sanitation, comes back in for overtime, then we... Our reserves go up at the end of the year.
Yes, symbiotically, you run fund balance.
So we don't lose anything. And then next year, we can see a reduction in millage based on those returns coming back in, or something to that effect.
Only if you use fund balance to balance the budget.
I got you. I'm with you.
Right, yes. I wouldn't recommend using reserves for anything other than one-time costs.
I hear you, absolutely. You know what I was saying.
Yes, sir.
But also, Mr. Chairman, as your reserves go up, you're going to need to build less reserves as you go, so you could budget that solidly into your budget in future years once your reserves get to that proper level.
That's correct. You can spend it on one-time expenditures like capital and other things that would normally be built into the budget, and so, yes, that is correct.
Or even do fun things like create a hurricane reserve.
There you go.
So that it's an issue...
That's what I want to see.
Well, I'd love to have that also, but I'd much rather have a more reduced millage rate.
That's right.
For the reduced millage rate, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting us.
Good questions. Thank you. All right. This pie chart basically shows the countywide revenues for the current fiscal year, and so it shows, you know, that taxes are 39 percent of countywide all funds budget. And then the next pie chart shows for the next fiscal year. So it shows the change, and then, of course, balance forward is one of the largest ones to grow. Intergovernmental shrunk quite a bit, but these will, of course, change. At least intergovernmental revenue will change as we get closer to September. Slide number 10 is countywide expenditures by category. Again, this is all of the funds of the county, and it's broken down into the different categories. One of the largest categories, or the largest category, is the transfers to constitutional officers, and I had it written in there, and school board. In current fiscal year, of course, we did have that $200,000 transfer to the school board. Next year, we do not have that in the budget. So that title will change going into the future, but I just wanted to point that out. Second largest category is reserves, and then, of course, public safety, number three. And then you can see the changes in those going down the list. Again, slide number 11 and 12. 11 is the current fiscal year. Pie chart, broken down into those different categories, and 12 is a comparison, the same format. Slide 13, countywide expenditures by element. I put this one in there to kind of sort this information into all of those expenditures into a little bit different format. So in this format, it shows you basically personnel services about midway down. That's for all of the personnel costs countywide. It doesn't cover... Yes, for B.O.C.C. Of course, under the transfers to constitutional officers and school board, that is their total amount, which is broken out into their operating and personnel and all of that various stuff. So just for the Board of County Commissioners, that's our personnel services. And, of course, the largest line is operating expenses at the top. And so it kind of gives you a good breakdown of changes, either increases or decreases in those different categories. Any questions on any of these?
I'd like to make a statement real quick. On the transfers to constitutional officers and school board, walk me through our tax collector, Linda Myers. She is... We do not fund her department, but she's a fee-based department, correct? Who actually funds back to us, correct, if there's excess money available?
No. I thought hers goes to the state. Her extra fees at the tax collector?
I don't know. I'm asking.
She actually... We elect her, but she is a state... Well, I don't want to call her employee, but...
She's a constitutional officer, which makes her... Well, she's a constitutional officer. She is a fee-based office. We pay a large amount of fees to that office, but they're statutorily driven fees. She doesn't set the fees. We do get money from her at year-end if she has excess.
If she has it.
As do, I'm assuming, other entities. It's proportional. Her fees would be included in our operating expenses on this slide.
But we share her, basically, with the state. I mean, her...
She sends money to the Water Management District. She sends money to the municipalities.
Any levying body. She collects fees based on the amount that she collects for them, so that's what Papel said.
I know it's a different relationship than any of the other constitutionals. That's my point.
Her relationship is unique.
And her funding is... And where she sends it, you know, we're kind of... I don't want to say last one total poll, but that's it. There's leftovers. She can spend it within her division or turn it over to us. Is that correct?
That's correct. She has a hard job, because as our values rise and fall, and our millage rises and falls, and, you know, she has to make sure she can run her office on an even keel.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add to the conversation this morning, this is the point in time that I would like to also remind the county commissioners of the follow-up conversations, subsequent conversations with the constitutionals. As you see your slide presented there this morning, the transfers to the constitutionals and the school board, we've had subsequent meetings since then. This is what I was mentioning earlier. This number will change moving forward in a positive direction, which will give us an opportunity when we come back in September, when we set the actual millage and set the actual budget, that we'll have some... Hopefully, this number will decrease, and we'll be able to do even more good for our community and our citizens. Again, this is where the constitutionals will be given back to the Board of County Commissioners. And let's also be reminded, last year, that I think I sat up here on my first meeting, and it was a very positive meeting when the constitutionals... I believe each one of them gave something back last year out of their budget that they did not appropriate or need. They gave back to the Board of County Commissioners to assist then. Again, I think that's a tribute to the relationship that U5 elected officials have with your constitutionals. And as we move forward, you know, this number is definitely going to change, and we'll reflect that when we come back.
All right. Next two slides, again, I just did some pie charts to kind of show it in visual form. Slide 14 is current fiscal year pie chart of those various different elements. And then 15 is the pie chart of next fiscal year with the way the budget is currently put together. Slide 16 shows a list of all of the 22 special revenue funds that we have, and I've done a slide on each of the special revenue funds to go over them really quickly, just, you know, so that everybody has a chance to know what each of the funds are that we're proposing budgets for. So the first one is Fund 120, the Law Enforcement and Education Fund. And I sorted them from smallest to largest, so these are obviously much smaller, so it's a $14,000 total fund, and the use is restricted for special training requirements. So getting back to, you know, the inclusion of the balance forward in the budget, you can see here, this fund has a small balance forward, almost $1,200. And even though, you know, we included, basically, unrestricted fund balance in the budget, even though it showed as that total amount, portions of that are restricted for certain purposes, like a significant portion of the fund balance, several million dollars was in better place. You know, even though that's unrestricted, within better place, it can be used on whatever project the board decides. There is some restrictions on how you can spend it, of course. It's better place money, and so same thing applies for a lot of the... Of course, it's better place money, and so, same thing applies for a lot of these funds. They're restricted for certain purposes, so just wanted to point that out. Slide 18 is Fund 607. That's Interlockin Lake Estates' Lake Access Lots Fund, and you can see that they have a balance forward of almost $44,000. And on the expenditure side, we've basically got that sitting in reserves, and Commissioner Harvey, I think, has more information on this fund than I think anybody else does, so we'll let him talk about this one if he would like to. You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Unless you want me to. It's, you know...
This is something that...
I'll do it real quick. I can do it in 30 seconds.
We heard enough of you last month on this one. Go ahead, Larry.
Well, I'm sorry, but...
I think you made even blush a bit.
I know. Back years ago, there was 13 or 15 lake access lots when Kevin, Commissioner Dershowitz was on board here. He got with Interlockin Lake Estates. There was certain problems out there with the sheriff's department, certain areas that were having problems. They consolidated these down, they sold the lots, and they put the money in this fund in order to improve the ones that they kept and the ones that were desirable, and that's the bottom line. So, I did that really quick. Thank you.
You did good.
Good. Everybody has that information, and this is something, of course, that as things come up, if we need to spend that money, we can come back to the commission with a budget adjustment and move that money out of reserves to either capital or operating to spend some of it.
So, they put the $43,000 in there, or whatever it is, and then they just never did anything with it?
We've improved a few places.
Okay, so you are utilizing it along the way.
It comes through Angie's department. There's been a few improvements that have been done, but not very many, because there's not a whole lot left, and there's, as you know, the county has a policy that swimming is not, so you see people that, and no parking, so it's kind of like you got to walk to it, and they put canoes in and kayaks and go fishing and things of that nature, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Slide number 19 is Fund 127, Crime Prevention Fund. It accounts for fines, specific fines levied to support crime prevention programs. You can see fines and forfeits of about $17,000. They do have a balance forward of about 35. We've budgeted most of it in operating expenses, but I believe this fund is one that they usually don't spend all of the money. That's why it does have a balance forward that continues from year to year. Again, it's restricted for crime prevention programs. Fund 603, Waste Water Utilities Fund. This is, of course, not the large East Putnam Regional Utility Fund. This Waste Water Utilities Fund is for Paradise Point and Point Buena Vista. We do have some funding, and I believe Mr. Tompkins is moving forward with projects to decommission both of those, and when that does occur, of course, the charges for service, those people will be transitioned to the larger utility fund, and so, this fund will be closed out, and that will be, hopefully, soon, I believe.
See him smiling.
Do we, who funds Drug Court?
That's...
Do you fund them out of yours, Tim? Do we fund it out of one of our funds?
It's partially from the general fund and partially from, I don't remember the name of it, but it's the 125 fund. I think it's the Article V Special Revenue Fund.
That one is coming up on the slide right in a minute.
That's it? Okay.
Yes, sir. That one's coming up right here, and I think, actually, the next slide, 22. Yeah. Slide 21 is Fund 119, Law Enforcement Trust Fund. This one is the one that accounts for funds and property confiscated by law enforcement. The use is restricted to certain purchases, and when they do want to spend this money, the approval does have to come back to the county commission as well, so. Slide 22 is the Article V Court Support Fund. This one is the one that Commissioner Turner was just asking about, and it's a little bit complicated, and how it works, Mrs. Papel has a lot more knowledge on it than I do.
I have to prepare a report on it quarterly. The money comes in, and it goes into four different pots. It goes, 25% goes to Drug Court, 25% goes to Legal Aid, 25% goes to Law Library, and 25% goes to a program we don't have. At the end of the year, anything, any excess that's left gets transferred over and can only be used for Drug Court in subsequent years. Right now, this is a declining revenue. The draws either equal or exceed the revenue coming in, and I'm having to move some of the money over to general fund. Also, in the past, that move wasn't made every time it should have been, and so, I'm having to pull from general fund to make good the past. So, yes.
So, the 25% for the program we don't have does end up in Drug Court the next year?
It ends up in Drug Court the next year.
Okay.
As a 50% or as a 25% again?
Everything that's left over can only go to Drug Court, so if Legal Aid, if there's more revenue than expense, that ends up in Drug Court. Law Library, if there's more revenue than expense, that ends up in Drug Court. So, Drug Court conceivably ends up with more than 50% of the money.
But, that fund, that 25% you're talking about, could be moved away to another program if it were to arise, and Drug Court would be shorted that amount theoretically.
It wouldn't be left over to carry to Drug Court the next year, yeah, if...
If Legal Aid's costs equal or exceeded the revenue, and if Law Library's costs equal or exceeded the revenue, then there wouldn't be extra leftover.
Okay. So, as you can see, there is a transfer from general fund in next year's budget of about $37,000 due to the total operating expenditures of almost 80, so. Slide 23, Fund 133 is Economic Development Fund. This is the fund that is where we pay the Chamber of Commerce out of for economic development services. The grants and aids of $12,000 for next year is for the Small Business Development Center that was approved. And in the future, this fund is also where other economic development incentives are paid out of. The big one that will be coming is, of course, the George Pacific one, and so, as they complete that project and as those values go on the tax roll and add the lower taxes increase coming in, that will have to be transferred from general fund to this fund, which will then be given back to GP.
How long does that program last? I forgot.
That was a five-year declining, the first year, I think, was 90%, and then...
Right.
First two years, if I remember correctly, and then after that, it was an 80% split on the final three years, I believe.
I remember something close to that.
With five years, not bad.
No, not bad at all.
But, that's got to be where they increase jobs, so it's got a benchmark, and if jobs are not increased, then we don't do that.
Yeah, but it's also, if I remember correctly, it's also only the money that would have increased from the additional stuff they put in, that if we didn't give them incentives, they wouldn't have brought here at all. So, it's only a percentage of the additional stuff for five years, and not what they already pay. Or any of the other additional equipment that they're putting in out there as we speak, they still have to pay taxes on that without any incentives, is my understanding.
That is correct.
This is only for just that one project that the board gave them incentives on.
So, we'll be relying heavily on the property appraiser to slice that out for us.
And we kept the jobs here in Putnam County.
Kept the mill here in Putnam County.
That's right. Yes, and commissioners are correct. There are other stipulations, I believe. There's an employment criteria they have to meet and different things like that. Do you remember what that was? Was it like 80 or something?
Something like 80 jobs.
80 jobs?
I think it was right around there, and then there was also proration, I believe. So, if they didn't quite meet it, you know, if they were short, then the amount of grant back of the percentage of taxes received was reduced in proportion to whatever number that was.
That's right. Yes. Okay. Slide 24 is the Communication Improvement Fund. Now, this is the fund that we use to make improvements and maintain the radio communication towers. Again, this fund is, has a significant transfer from the general fund, about $186,000. The positive news on this fund is the debt service on the expenditure side of a little over $120,000 does go away in 2020, but even if that does go away, the expenses are exceeding the revenues that are coming into this fund, and as we all know, there are still major improvements that need to be done to our radio communication system. So, just wanted to show everybody, you know, the details on this fund. Any questions?
Can I ask something? Where's the grant for the radios going?
That is in the 308 fund that we are reopening. That'll be coming up in a slide in a minute. Slide 25 is Fund 163. This is the West Putnam MSBU Fund. You can see they have, they do have a balance forward of about $130,000, and on the expenditure side, I think we did cover all of the operating expenditures in this fund.
I think so, too.
So, there will be a little bit of reserves. However, it does look like that the special assessments of about $130,000 a year going forward are not going to be sufficient to cover. I think I would have to pull the bids again and look through them, but...
And they've decreased services out there based on these declining revenues that have been coming in, so they can't grade every road out there. They can only grade some roads as we do when it's necessary to do. Some roads don't get graded at all, because nobody lives on them, but, and then they try to hit the highlight. They do a really good job for the little bit of money they got, but, as you well know, those MSBU fees were put in play years and years ago, and they weren't indexed, and it's a very small $23 a year fee that the people are paying to get, you know, services, so, I mean, we all understand it's additional fee, but it's just not going to be enough one day to cover going forward.
One day soon.
One day soon. I know.
That is correct, yeah. And we've got a couple other MSBU funds that are coming up, and we'll go through those as well. Slide 26 is the Drivers Education Fund. This one was one of the ones that, as you can see, the balance forward changed pretty significantly from this year to next year because that entire amount of balance forward had not been included. However, the fines and forfeits they only bring in about, we're estimating $16,000 a year, and the school district, they ask, usually ask for about $25,000 a year for the...
20 to 25 is what they generally ask for.
However, as you can see, they still have an ample balance forward to use for this, so.
It says for public or non-public schools, so homeschoolers could apply? How do they get this money? Charter schools, Christian schools?
I don't know, but it has to be for traffic education programs.
And then, you know, by talking about these different kinds of funds and bringing them to the forefront and the monies that they do have, this is something that we can put some more research into and look into potentially, you know, putting that money, money to use in those areas that it's restricted for. Slide 27 is Fund 606. This is the Paradise Point, Point Buena Vista. This is the water side of those two, and as you can see, again, the reason this one has a large budget is because of the balance forward that they have, the reserves that they have. Again, as these are decommissioned, those reserves will be used to decommission them, or they will be transferred over to the larger regional utility fund. Slide 28, Fund 126 is the Court Technology Fund. Again, this is restricted for technological support for court administration, state attorney, public defender's office. This is, we get their budget request from, I believe, the state attorney's office, was who sent in the budget request?
Court administration, state attorney, public defender, and the requests this year actually exceeded the available funds. The state attorney was a little late getting me the budget, and I had just budgeted a duplicate budget, and the state attorney wanted a little more, and it wasn't there to give.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a few comments on this particular fund, just for knowledge purposes? But, back in 2004, when the legislature instituted the Article V revisions from the last Constitutional Revision Commission effort, where they established a state court system versus a county-funded court system. In the state revenue, they cover the cost of personnel for the court system, but they still kept the burden of the facilities and technology funded by the counties. So, the county still has those responsibilities, so as facility needs come along or technology improvements for all of those entities, the county still is required to fund those. But, the legislature did authorize $2 of a $4 increase in filing fees for official records that goes to the county to help offset those requirements. So, they gave you a revenue source, and you kept the responsibility for funding that. So, sometimes those always don't match exactly, but it gets most of the cost, and when requests come in, they have to talk to your budget folks, and they say, can we do this? And then, they look and say, well, there's no additional dollars available this year to do some enhancement or improvement to that. So, that's how that all came about and why you still have that responsibility.
And the no additional dollar conversation, you can see there's no reserves here.
And where, if I could, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Where does the small county courthouse assistant for rural counties program come in to this equation?
Okay, well, that fund, and I don't know the number of it, but 122, is, it comes from two sources. One, there's a small part of one of the fines or assessments that is levied by the court, but the majority of the money that we've been able to use over the past few years to renovate the courthouse and actually do the work we're doing with the state attorney's office now, came mostly from a budget authorization from the legislature. For years, they would put anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 a year in their state budget that would come to Putnam County, and those monies went into that 125 fund, so that it built up over years. It was restricted for use of the courthouse, and then, when the economy started going bad in 2007 and '08, then they quit having those line item appropriations. The reason I wanted to mention that is because with the large surplus that the state now has and is anticipating having, I think it's time during the legislative delegation process that we ask them to consider, once again, making those contributions to small counties and allow us to build those when those large ticket items come in for court needs. You've got basically a little reserve there that you've built over years, and I will have to compliment past administrations for really not allowing others to access those funds and have kept them, so when we've had these needs, and just like we did for our, I call it our new courthouse. It's built in 1906, but it's completely functional, it's up-to-date technology, it doesn't leak, the air works good. We have, you know, hundreds of people that come through that building every day accessing the courts, and it, to me, is just as good as if we had built a new courthouse, which we anticipated doing some years ago at a cost of about $35 million. We didn't, but we had money in that reserve that allowed us to re-roof it, put new windows in, insulate it, bring technology up to speed, and keep right on going with the current facility that we have. So, that's more history than you probably want, but it is important to, you know, understand those things.
That's right.
So, when you see those funds start to build, you know that they're there for a particular need, that hopefully, when that need comes along, you don't have to go to the general fund to get it, that you're building it.
I brought it up because I know it was very helpful.
It is, very helpful. And so, because that $2 of that $4 increase to the recording fee, as our recording numbers now start to climb again, then that fund will be funded at a much faster rate. So, we're hoping that that will certainly help that out. So we're hoping that that will certainly help that out, that side of it too.
Yeah.
As you can see, charges for service are increasing from this fiscal year to next fiscal year, so it is a, it's positive. And we'll talk about the other reserves that Mr. Smith was just mentioning when we get to that fund in just a minute. Slide 29, Fund 162 is the ILE Fund. Three MSBU's within this fund, ILE South, North, and I believe it's 315 North. You can see they do have a balance forward. However, we do have all of the balance forward, as well as the special assessments coming in, budgeted to operating expenses to cover the grading costs and contract costs and... Yeah, and I think that the costs that we do have budgeted, we're not, we're not covering the bid amounts that did come in, so... Next slide is Slide 30, Fund 114, the Fishing Fund. Again, this fund, including the entire balance forward, going into next fiscal year, they have about 376,000 balance forward. They bring in almost 41,000 a year. On the expenditure side, we did budget 175 for capital outlay, and that's for any project that may come along. There is not a specific project. I did talk with the Parks and Recreation Director yesterday afternoon via email. She did verify that there are no current projects that are...
Undesignated.
Yes, it is undesigned. So the 175 for capital outlay, as well as the one, approximately 192 in reserves, is available for any project that, that the Fishing Fund Committee and the county commissioners, any projects that may come along that they think would be positive to spend that money on.
Good job, thank you.
Basically, they're budgeted at $418,000 for next year to be available for the boat ramps or whatever they decide that they want to recommend.
That is correct. If anything comes forward, like a large project, that's, that would be larger than the 175,000, and even if I, even if they do recommend a project, I believe it does have to come to the county commission for approval first before that is spent. But if it's more than that, a budget, budget transfer approval would come along with it to move that money out of reserves, so... Slide 31, this is the Fund 175. This is the larger MSBU fund. I believe there are seven active MSBU's in this fund. As you can see, they have a pretty large balance forward. And then on the expenditure side, about 221,000 expenditures and reserves are decreasing. Expenditures do outweigh the special assessments that are coming in, but they, at this point, they do still have reserves. Slide 32 is the E911 Fund, Fund 130. And I'll let Mrs. Papel talk about this one. There's, there's quite a bit included in this one.
We get revenues from cellphone bills, telephone bills, what have you. There's a small E911 charge, and that's how this is funded. We also get grants. We pay for two positions out of this fund that does the GIS 911 addressing. If there's money left over after our grant purchases and after our regular revenues come in, historically, we've been reporting that money as helping to fund E911 at the sheriff's office, but we haven't been transferring the money. So we've done some catch-up transfers, and we are now budgeting a transfer to the general fund from this fund. We have, it's incumbent upon us to go ahead and make those transfers yearly, because if we have money left over in that fund at the end of a year, we have two years to spend the money, and it has to be spent on capital. So it's better to offset salaries at the sheriff's office for E911.
We're also going to be, in conjunction with the appropriation that we received to upgrade the dispatch consoles at the sheriff's office, there is some equipment that has to be replaced out there that goes along with the dispatch consoles, and we're going to be using funds out of the E911 fund to do that, so that we're not using old equipment with the new consoles that we're getting, so... Slide 33 is Fund 170. That's the ship fund. As you can see here, the only thing on next fiscal year's budget, and this is either likely to change by September or shortly after the new fiscal year starts, we don't have any of the revenue budgeted yet, but we will be coming back and either changing that before we adopt the budget or after the budget is adopted. The new administrator for the ship program started July 1, and they are going to be concentrating on getting the county back into compliance in regards to the ship fund. And I believe we do have two years' worth of funding that is still going to be coming in for ship programs. And as you can see, they, they do have a balance forward that, again, will be used on new ship projects going forward. Any questions? Okay. Slide 34 is the Tourist Development Fund, Fund 131. Again, this fund is another one that, you can see, the balance forward and the reserves have grown quite a bit from year to year, and that's because we did include all of the reserves within this fund. And I guess everybody knows as of now, because it was in the paper the other, was that yesterday? Yesterday's paper?
Yesterday.
That they were getting Bass Masters Elite, so some of that will probably be budgeted out of reserves into various operating expenditures for that, and...
Plus, state revenues appear to have come in a little bit higher than what we've put in the budget, so you're probably going to see us increase revenues and reserves in this fund.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Past couple of years, I've served on this committee, and I tell you, it's eye-opening. You can see a direct correlation to any, anything that comes into the county that puts heads and beds to this sales ta, I mean, this tax increase. And I tell you, everything, I don't care if it's bicyclists, fishermen, Little League sports, fine arts, you name it, you see an event and you see the revenue follow that event. And it's historic, so hats off to that for all the events that go on in this county, because this helps promote Putnam County to the utmost, so thank you.
Slide 35, this is Fund 160. This is Miscellaneous Grants Fund. Within this fund, we get several grants. One of them is the Emergency Management Grant, so there is one emergency management position funded from this fund. We also get a library grant that funds three positions in libraries. And these grants also cover operating expenses, so you can see there that under Personnel Services and Operating Expenses, we do have some funds budgeted. On the capital outlay, the $1,080,000, I believe this is the fund that we have the...
$1 million of it is the fire station.
The $1 million for the fire station placed in.
And it will be tweaking the numbers as we get closer to year-end and know exactly what we've spent this year and what's going to carry over.
Correct.
And that kind of correlates back to our beginning conversation of increase in a budget. Really, we're counting, we're capturing all those numbers that are coming in, and that's what makes our budget look bigger, but it's really technically, we're just money in, money out type situation.
That is, that is correct, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Slide 36, this is Fund 122, the Court Improvement Fund. This was the fund that we were talking about earlier. You can see they do have a pretty, pretty significant balance forward, about 1.4 million. This is the fund that, in the current fiscal year, I believe about a million of capital outlay was, set aside for the Clark Building. We did not know what that was going to cost. We have spent some of it this year, but obviously not that entire amount. We've built in an additional 200,000 into next year for any additional improvements that may not be completed within this fiscal year. But as you can see, they do still have almost 1.3 million in reserves. And so this was the, this was the money that Clark Smith was mentioning earlier. Slide 37 is the Fire MSTU Fund. This is the fund that covers countywide fire protection. As you can see at the description at the bottom, most of the municipalities in the county through volunteer firefighters and 18 county fire stations. Okay, on the revenue side, you can see balance forward. We estimated to have about a quarter million dollars, about $250,000 as a balance forward. On the expenditure side, at the end of next year, we're estimating to have almost 84,000 in reserves. You can see capital outlay did grow a little bit. We did include some capital requests that Chief Ramey put in the budget. I believe he, and operating expenses as well. I believe the brush gear did not rise to the level to fall under capital outlay, but the bunker gear did, so that is in there. Personnel services did increase, because with the completion of the East Blacka Fire Station, there will be additional staffing requirements for that. Any discussion on fire? Okay. Slide 38 is Transportation Fund. This is the largest of the special revenue funds. As you can see, all balance forward for next fiscal year, almost 850,000 is a balance forward. But even with that balance forward, the line just under it, it still requires a transfer from general fund of almost $54,000. This is the fund that Public Works, basically all of the staff in relation to the roads and drainage maintenance is paid from. There are other funds that we'll see shortly that are in relation to the capital improvements to roadways, such as resurfacing. As you can see, this, this fund is going to continue being a challenge, because even with a use of a significant amount of balance forward and even some, some transfer from general fund, and, and we did reduce what we could on, on the operating expenses, as well as Personnel Services, moving forward, the, the cost of maintaining mowing and grading and everything throughout the county is exceeding the revenues that we have coming in from, from those gas taxes. So that is going to be a continuing challenge, I think, as everybody is well aware of, moving forward. So just wanted to point out that...
Question?
Harvey?
Yes, sir. So this is all gas tax money, number one. The public needs to know that their, their abhorrent doesn't pay that.
That is correct.
Gas tax does. And I saw, you know, going from the 17, 18 budget of 375 from the general fund to 53.5 currently, does that mean that we're more efficient? Does that mean that we're going to be less drain on general fund? Is that, what does that mean?
Last year, we had, last year before the hurricane.
Right.
When we had the budget prepared, we had a little bit larger cash balance forward, and we had no transfer from the general fund. Then we had the hurricane.
Right.
And we did some last-minute budget changes, and that 375 coming over was directly related to the hurricane.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. That answers the question.
It was also set aside in reserves. If you look down on the bottom portion of the expenditures, the 375 in from general and 375 was set aside. So unfortunately, the coming fiscal year, we do not have anything budgeted for reserves, so...
So the only thing that's going to create a reserve will be excess revenues, because we budget conservatively at 95% in attrition. That's the only thing that's going to, or efficiencies that we're not expecting to find, found.
Can we do some exploratory stuff in the coming year? These transportation fund dollars are declining throughout the nation as automobiles get better mileage. So this base model is failing. We've got a, whatever the cutting edge is, we got to get on it. And get these revenues from a different place. I don't know if we can, if there's any mechanism that allows us to do that, but we're going to have to come up with something.
It would be legislatively.
Well, we'll do some research and see, try to look at some other counties. I'm planning to do that, you know, countywide, looking at how other counties, you know, maybe roughly our size or even larger, smaller, see if they might be doing things differently that might be more efficient or, or, you know, something that just, that we haven't thought of yet.
Well, commissioners, this is our real challenge in this county.
Oh, yes, it is.
You know, with the lack of land development codes and the, you know, the drainage problems, especially this summer and all this, it's all related to this. And we really need to come up with something, and maybe not even follow somebody else. Let's lead.
That's, that's right.
And do something.
I want, I want to start there, you know, and see if there are other things that county, other counties may be doing that, that we could use to improve what we're doing. But, you know, again, spend a lot of time trying to think outside of the box. Try to think of something that nobody else may have done yet.
This is going to be our challenge. That's right. It is now. You're right.
This is just a basic description of the Transportation Fund, okay. Enterprise Fund, Slide 40, we've got three of them.
Matt, Mr. Reynolds?
Sure, go ahead.
Before you move to the Enterprise Fund, let's take a vibrate and a recess.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Go ahead and reconvene our budgets. I just wanted to clarify too, at the end of the, after we get through with this, I'm going to have a, you know, public comment. And so before we proceed any further, do we, is there any other questions for Transportation Fund?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I appreciated Commissioner Lible's comments earlier about the declining potential revenue from the transportation dollars. And when I was at a clerks conference last week, we had a gentleman speaking to us about what the future looks like. And he said particularly of interest to clerks because we are funded from, on our court side, from traffic citations and those types of, you know, traffic issues. An interesting thing that he said was, he said, if you have grandchildren being born today or children being born, the likelihood of them never learning to drive is a real possibility.
That's right.
Because of autonomous vehicles coming along. And he said, so what that means for government is less revenue from traffic citations, from gas tax, from all of these items. So I appreciate that Commissioner Lible, you know, was saying we really do need to look forward to try to find how do we manage with a shift in how people move around. So those are things that I think as this commission moves, you know, forward over the years, is going to really have to start paying attention to. And, you know, these types of meetings, you know, give us those opportunities to, you know, think about those things in the future because the economy is shifting. But there are still going to be needs and we're going to have to find ways to do that. So I just wanted to offer that encouragement to continue to look at those future trends that are, you know, coming way quicker than we probably thought they were. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm still not going to get in a cab or a car that there's no driver.
We were just saying that they'll all be hovercraft and we won't need roads.
It's the pay of roads.
But Mr. Smith, you're correct. I mean, how many young people do you know now that don't want to get their driver's license? They have no need for it? I mean, I remember the day I turned 15 and then the day I turned 16 to get my, I was there. I was, I wanted, that was freedom for me. But in some of these areas where they don't need to drive or don't want to, I mean, we could face a massive shift in the economy there. So I do appreciate Commissioner Lible and you, Mr. Smith, for pointing that out because we do need to look forward. And thank you, Commissioner Lible.
I'm impressed.
Smith, I have a, I have a granddaughter coming in September, so you mean I don't have to start saving for a car?
Well, no, you might have a car, but it's going to be autonomous and she's not going to drive it. She's just going to get in and punch in an address and it's going to take her there. It's not going to speed, it's not going to drink and drive, it's not going to do any of that stuff. It's just going to.
I don't think that's going to work in rural Putnam County because I tell you, my GPS has no idea where I'm at some days.
But you remember 15 years ago, there wasn't a GPS much at all. So 15 years from now, there's no telling where we'll be.
That's right, that's true.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
Enterprise Funds, there are three of them. Waste Management Sanitation Fund, solid waste, has many different management. Port Authority Fund and the East Putnam Regional Utility Fund, which is the big utility fund. So slide 41 is Fund 401. That's Waste Management, Solid Waste, Sanitation. You can see here that we did include the unrestricted balance forward. That is the money that can be used on, you know, capital or any other sort of operating expenditures. There is much more in reserve that is not shown in the budget, but that is restricted for all of the various compliance issues, the closures and all of those various things that it is restricted for. So that is not shown in the budget. You can see capital outlay did go up some, and that is because, I think it's on this next slide, I've got the info. The capital outlay does include the purchase of new compactor bulldozer in front end loader because the current equipment is several years past its useful life. Mr. Gast has had several issues this year with equipment being down and not being able to be used. So we felt that it was time to get that in the budget and move forward with that. The reserves did show at the end of the year, it was decreasing reserves a little bit, about half a million dollars down to a million. But of course, that does not include the reimbursement from FEMA that we talked about earlier. That is quite a, quite a large amount of money that will go back into reserves and that will be available for, for other uses. At the bottom of slide 42, it does show the proposed solid waste assessments and landfill, the cost for that went up a dollar, collection went down a dollar, and recycling went down a dollar. So that means for the majority of county residents, the fees will go down $1 for next year. City of Palaca residents, their fee will stay the same because they do not pay collection. So the landfill and the recycling increase and decrease offset for the, for the city of Palaca. Any questions, discussion, anything on, on solid waste? All right. Slide 43 is Fund 404. This is the Port Authority Fund. We did, yeah, no, I changed. Okay. The miscellaneous revenue you can see did increase a little bit. We did, I believe it was at the commission meeting on Tuesday, we approved the one-year renewal of the lease.
Right.
Out there for the, for the school. And so, yes, we picked up nine months of revenue, so that is added back into the budget. But this is another one of the funds that we did include all of the balance forward. So you can see there, almost a million coming forward, but the operating expenditures are exceeding revenues in the Port Authority Fund. A pretty, pretty big portion of the operating expenditures is for depreciation, so it's not an actual cash expense. However, there are assets that the Port Authority does own that we do need to be setting aside money for to, to replace those, you know, buildings and various things. So any, any discussion on Port Authority? Slide 44 is the East Putnam Regional Utility Fund. This is the big utility fund. We do have balance forward going into next year, approximately 1.4 million. The intergovernmental revenue and transfers from other funds did, did go down. The transfers from other funds next year of 610,000, 550,000 of that is from Better Place and that is for a portion of the debt service. The debt service, of course, is, is larger than that on the expenditure side at the bottom. But it does also have 60,000 from the general fund in order to supplement this fund. And as you can see, reserves are decreasing from 1.4 million down to 1.263. So that is something, just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Reynolds, may I ask?
Sure.
And I don't know if you're going to know this right off the hand, but we have a lot of capacity still in the, in our services. Do you know what capacity we're running at now versus where we, I know we want to be 100%, but this.
Mr. Tompkins might be able to answer that if he.
I just really want to show the public there's room to grow and there's a lot of room to grow, so, but I don't remember what those amounts.
I'm going to say, from what I, I think we're running around 40% capacity right now. So we do have plenty of room for growth.
That's the same number I was giving.
Thirty-five.
Okay. One, one positive thing that we didn't note in here, of course, is we did get a state appropriation to extend the water line to the new fire station. We also got two different projects from the Water Management District to convert septic to sewer, LC Road and Pico Drive and where was?
Horse Landing.
Horse Landing Road. And so that's going to further expand the system that, you know, over time, more and more people we expect to be connecting to the system. So that is, there's some positives out there in regards to this fund, so.
Well, you can't be expected to be at 100% capacity when you build. That just doesn't make sense. But we want to grow that system to be that and we got plenty of room to do that on that one system. So, Mr. Tompkins, thank you. Ms. Reynolds.
If we ever get this system to where it's actually ahead in revenues, then we could take those revenues that were ahead and actually put them back in to get more people hooked up and use that money to hook more people up to even increase the volume. But until we get to that point, it just makes it difficult. You've got to slowly get to that point. That's where we are.
Yep, that's right.
Along those same lines, real quick, before we move out, I know that we're moving the debt service at the 550,000. Let's just, in a perfect world, say, you know, next few years we're 100% and we're flush with cash, are we going to be repaying that money back to the Better Place Plan for those obligations that have been done in the past? Would that be something we could possibly look at? I'm sorry, I got everybody off guard on, I didn't mean to do.
It would probably be the will of the commission, whether we did that or not.
Well, I like Commissioner Turner's idea too, to reinvest back in the product and continue along.
We don't have to repay it.
We don't have to, but we could.
We are setting aside funds in Better Place. We'll get to that for future debt, but.
I hear you.
Yeah.
Let's all hope that scenario transpires.
I would love that.
Lovely conversation to have, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would.
What do we do with all our extra money?
That's right.
Well, you know, when we borrowed that money, it was right in the height of the recession.
Yes, it was.
And it was, it came highly recommended that we do so. And, and that hurt, that was $40 million that we borrowed from rural development and, but the plan is working exactly the way they said. If you want to grow coming out of the recession and go forward, you're going to have to have a regional water system. And it was a big chance, but, and a recession lingered on for quite, four more years than we thought it would. But now it's right on time.
Well, and let's look at the corridor around 207 and let's look at the 17 in East Palaca.
Exactly.
We're seeing.
You're seeing it, yep.
And I ate lunch over there with the Commissioners from Okeechobee County yesterday and the water quality is really good.
Did you ever have a Coca-Cola from the old Burger King over there?
I did.
It was sulfur in Coca-Cola.
It was sulfur water.
So if there's not a better example, it would be a simple Coca-Cola.
That's right.
Yeah, that is a positive, you know, with the appropriation that we did receive, we're, we're going to be able to, to get those services a little further down 207 to hopefully entice some development because that, that, you know, from what we've heard, that is something that they, they definitely want to have available when they, you know, consider developing any, any sort of residential development out there.
Well, you know, St. John's County is outgrowing itself.
Oh, yeah.
Putnam is available and.
Absolutely.
You know, you can get there from the intersection of 207 and 17 in 30 minutes now. So that's a nice drive.
Yep. And when we can say we have water and sewer available, you know, things, good things might, might happen out there, so.
That's why Commissioner Turner's excited about his district, aren't you?
All right. Slide 46, two, two debt service funds, the County Jail Sinking Fund and the MSBU Sinking Fund. Slide 47, Fund 201 is the County Jail Sinking Fund. So you can see there is a reserve in this fund and it is growing. And you can see the transfer in from Better Place of about 872,000. That's a little bit more than the debt service, but we are required to grow the amount of funds in reserve within this fund.
Can you rename that fund? That sinking doesn't sound so good.
I know. Another commissioner asked about that the other day, you know, why, why are they called sinking funds? And it's, yeah, yeah.
I'm kidding.
It's, it's an old fashioned term.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
You ever been to an accountant's convention? That'll tell you why.
Aren't we lively?
Yes. Probably as lively as attorney convention.
Slide 48, Fund 212 is the MSBU Sinking Fund. As you can see here, we, we do not have anything budgeted for special assessments and on the expenditure side, the, the debt service was satisfied within the current fiscal year. However, there's some nuances to this that Mrs. Papel can talk about.
I have received anecdotal information that we'll be getting special assessments in. I haven't verified it, so I haven't budgeted it. Obviously, there will be delinquent assessments coming in because not everybody's up to date. We need to do some research before we designate where the residual in this fund goes, I suspect, Transportation Fund, but I'm not committing to it on paper until I do some research. So here it sits and we'll close it out next year.
And if I'm not mistaken, these were multiple dirt to paving projects on the MSBU where the, like in my area, where we paid 100% of our road to get. And we can't identify which ones have fund balances left in those.
It's maintenance MSBUs that were converted to paving MSBUs and then funds were borrowed, but seed money could have been transferred in. We need to verify where the seed money came from. It's some off the books accounting, so it needs to be carefully looked at.
I'm pretty sure it came from District 3.
And the fun begins, folks.
All right. Slide 49, moving on to capital projects funds. We have three of them with, with budget amounts this year. Slide 50 is the 308, the Capital Projects Fund. You can see this fiscal year, we did not have anything budgeted in this fund, and going into next year, we only have the, I did not change the description, it still says animal shelter, but it should just be, the communication equipment, which is the dispatch consoles, is going to be, that project will be done out of this fund.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could we back up to 47 just a second?
Sure.
Back to the County Jail Sinking Fund.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed that we're gonna carry a reserve of 677, 645.
That's correct.
Okay. Why would we transfer that much from the Better Place Plan just to carry a reserve from the jail sinking fund?
Our debt covenants require us to build a reserve in that fund, and we...
That's the stuff from the audit where it said that we weren't...
No, this is just, just the loan documents.
The actual loan agreement requires us to...
The debt documents.
The loan documents say that we'll build a reserve to pay payments past the end of the Better Place if there's no Better Place back then again?
No, this isn't, the pledged revenue source for the jail debt is the general fund's local half-cent, um...
Sales tax.
Yeah, sales tax. Um, no, the documents just say we have to build a reserve.
Okay, so, so we're gonna build half a million of them in one year?
We, we started at just under 600, and then we're going up to about 677, 678.
Well, in 1718 budget year, it says we had reserves of 158, but that was going into it from last year?
Terry, we're required to set aside a certain amount per month until we reach a certain level, and I can get you that exact amount later.
I don't really need you to prove it to me. I'll take your word for it. I just was wondering what it was.
It's part of the debt covenants.
Why did we have to do that?
It's USDA's required debt covenants.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's, what they're, the reason is, is that for any unanticipated decline in that half-cent sales tax revenue, that they're still gonna get their debt service payment. So it just is to build that little cushion in there over some time, and then you can reduce that increases.
In the, in the agreement with US, RD, USDA RD, is that where we got this money over the county? In that agreement, did it say that the, the reserves had to be at a certain amount or a certain reserve? I mean, or do they keep climbing till the end, or...
I think it keeps climbing until it reaches a certain point.
Okay.
So you have to set, there's a calculation.
I would, I would like somebody to do some research and see what that point is, you know.
I, I can get you that, I've got that.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I do see what you're talking about, though, Commissioner, the, the balance forward. It does show an increase from year to year of about 500,000. The only thing I can think of is the entire amount just wasn't placed in the budget, even though it might have been sitting in that fund, because the, the, the transfer coming in from Better Place and then what we spent on debt service, it, it wouldn't have allowed for that much of an increase.
Plus, interest is accruing at a greater rate than anticipated, which is good news.
If it's increasing 518,000 a year on 1.4 million in dividends, I want to buy some of those CDs.
Right behind me.
That's right.
But we, we faced this at the Children's Reading Center when I was on the board out there. It was USDA loan, and they made us have the reserves sitting there. And once we hit that spot, we, we didn't have to fund that account anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Slide 51, this is Fund 307, the Road and Drainage Projects Fund. Now, this, this is the, the capital expenditure fund for road and drainage projects. So you can see, intergovernmental revenue, 1.4 million, that is a pretty big decrease from this current fiscal year, about 8.5 million. This is basically the fund that we were talking about earlier for a lot of, Mr. Tompkins, the Public Works Directors, capital projects, grant projects, SCOP, scrap, all of those various ones that we have.
Ferry grant.
Yep, ferry grant, those, those various different things. You can see we have about 2.4 million in balance forward. It's increasing to 2.6 million. On the, on the taxes line, you can see we bring in 1.16-ish million, and, and this is the capital gas tax, the gas tax that can only be used for capital. On the capital outlay, you see we've got the 2,406. That is basically the intergovernmental revenue of 1,406, and then we have $1 million down in the description at the bottom, $1 million for road resurfacing projects. The two projects that we do have in the budget are Dog Branch and Toll's Road Drainage. One positive thing about this is, is the reserves, and Mrs. Papel can kind of explain.
Most of those reserves can be used for resurfacing, but an analysis needs to be done, because commingled within those reserves are contributions from GP for the...
216.
216, I can never remember that number. And also, advanced grant match from BPP for the ferry project. And it's taken my three years almost here to really make sure I had all of the pieces so that I can determine how much of that money is leftover gas tax money that can be used. So it's possible next year, we could even budget a larger amount for resurfacing because of the balance forward.
Yeah. Slide 52 is Fund 301, Better Place Fund. As you can see up at the top, it, it shows as internal services, but that's, that's balance forward. Going into next budget year, we've got a little over 4.5 million. The revenue's coming in, going up a little bit. Down on the bottom side, you can see we've got almost 7 million in capital outlay. Inter-fund transfers of, of almost 1.9. In the next slide, I'll, I'll show the detail on all these. So we have set aside in, in just other reserves, a little over 500,000, and that can be allocated to other projects or kept in the fund. We also do have 1.1 million dollars as a reserve for future debt. Mrs. Papel can explain the, the reserve for future debt.
This is an outcome of the audit from Tallahassee that we got. I plan to come back to you with an official debt plan for you to pass, which has specific amounts each year to set aside, but in anticipation of that, we've set aside some money last year, and we've add to, added to it this year, so that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, even though you haven't passed a, a plan yet.
This was the water system where we pledged Better Place money, and then we had to renew it, and is that correct?
Where the debt for the water wastewater plant...
Overexceeds.
Exceeds the length of the BPP that's been approved.
The jail, too, or just the water?
Just the water.
Just, just, I, it, there's some wastewater debt, that there's a pledge on, too, I believe, water and wastewater.
So slide 53 kind of shows the breakdown. Yeah, yeah, and there'll be some adjustments to it, because we just got revenue estimates in from the state, so there'll be some adjustments to, to the revenue side as well by September.
Positive.
And also, it's not realistic to think that we're gonna get all the projects done in Better Place, so even when you see that negative number there, that's really not going to happen based on the reserves and based on all the projects not gonna be completed, 'cause some, we've been, you know, animal shelter, we've been carrying that money forward, and other items we've been carrying forward. So we're really, we're just, we're hoping to do them all.
It's just the budget, so.
The good news is, when I started, we had 9 million, 9 million plus...
Right.
In, in fund balance, and we have been spending this money. It's not just sitting in the bank.
Good.
And there will always be some, some level of reserve in, in this fund because of that fact, you know? Projects, you know, may not move forward as quickly as anticipated, and so inevitably that, that, that does happen. Slide 53 shows, shows the breakdown on the transfers. Some of them we've already talked about, the 550,000 to the Regional Utility Fund, the 872,000 to the Jail Debt Service Fund. There's also a transfer into the General Fund of 455,000, and that is for Veterans Park. And we'll talk about that one when we get to the, to the General Fund. We've included the original estimate that was based on what was submitted to FEMA. I think it was about 1.8 million, and the 455,000 is the 25% share. The projects, the, the 7 million that we've got in capital, you can see the breakdown down at the bottom, we've got 4 million in for roads and, and any drainage projects. We've got 1.8 million in for public safety and public work vehi, public works vehicles and equipment. We do have the 750,000 for the animal shelter that we're carrying forward into next year, and we've got 275,000 in for parks improvements, and I believe that's Georgetown and South Putnam.
District 1, correct.
Yes, correct, sir.
Two, two.
I think you just shot an arrow.
All right. Slide 54 shows the three internal service funds. We'll move through these pretty quickly, as long as we don't have any questions. The Fund 501 is the Fleet Maintenance Fund. At the top, we have transfers in from all of the other funds that utilize, that utilize fleet maintenance. Didn't really have many changes on the expenditure side, so transfers in equal expenditures to, to maintain all of that, that equipment, so. Slide 56 is the Insurance Reserve Fund.
Matt, before you go past that, I need to stop right there. I, I recall conversations that we had about using outside vendors for some small items like oil changes and things in that nature to help reduce cost and get efficiency, so the fleet maintenance department can you, can be better spent on bigger items that they don't need to be drugged down. How, how did we do on that, or where are we at at that?
Those expenditures are actually still part of that budget under the operating expenditures. It's just a balance of parts they buy and do the labor in-house, or the expenditures when they have to send it out to, to another one.
We are doing that.
But, yes, internally, we're gonna be looking at the, the processes and the procedures for, to fleet, to, to try to make that more efficient.
It's a work in progress.
Gotcha. Thank you.
506, Insurance Reserve Fund. Again, this is the fund that we bring in all of the transfers from the various funds that, that the county has, as well as constitutional officers participate in this, because this is the health insurance, dental, life, vision, all of those different insurances. You'll see the contributions decreased, but that is because operating expenditures decreased, and that is because a lot of people have gone with the, the...
War plan.
Yeah, cheaper, cheaper plan.
Mid-level or more basic plan.
So, those, those total premium cost is lower, and so that does decrease operating expenditures when that occurs, so the contributions do decrease. They go hand-in-hand with that. We do have a little bit of reserve budgeted here. You'll see almost 189,000. We are going to be continuing to try to grow that reserve. As, as everyone is aware, commissioners, you, you approved moving forward with looking at self-insurance some more, and byproduct of, of going self-insured is having a reserve. And so that is, that is, we're working on trying to increase that reserve so that we can, we can get that in the works. One FTE is paid from this fund, so that is one staff member in HR that is, she coordinates insurances, so she is paid from this fund. Slide 57 is Risk Management Fund, and this is for all of the other insurances that the county has, general liability, workers' comp, automobile, you know, all of those various insurances. Again, transfers in from other funds, equalling operating expenditures, as well as making sure that we, we keep a reserve on hand, because we are self-insured for workers' comp. So that reserve can, of course, fluctuate depending on how workers' comp claims go. So, you know, a bad year, we might have a little bit less in reserves. Good year, the reserves might grow, so. Also, take note, there is one position paid from, paid from this fund that's within the HR department as well. All right. Slide 58. Last but not least, General Fund, largest fund.
Do we have an actuary that tells us the size of our reserves on our workers' comp fund every year? Who sets our reserve amounts?
We get an actuarial report every other year, and we book those reserves based on that calculation.
Okay, thank you.
Slide 58 is General Fund, and this shows the total revenues and total expenditures of the General Fund. You'll see this year's a budget, 48 million. Next year's is at 57 million. Big component of that is the inclusion of the balance forward, the full amount of the balance forward. You know, you can see near the top in the, in the middle column, next year's budget, we're expecting to carry forward into beginning the next fiscal year with about 6.3 million in reserves. I believe we, we started this fiscal year with about 4.8 million in reserves. So that is a, that is a very positive thing. The other reason for the increase, you'll see debt proceeds there, has an additional 1.4 million included there, transfers on other funds of about 500,000. That's the 455,000 from Better Place, as well as we've booked the FEMA portion of the, the Veterans Park project as debt proceeds. We, because of what we were discussing earlier about FEMA revenues, don't really know when they're gonna come in, so we've put it in as a debt proceed, and there's various different ways we could do that. Inter, inter-fund debt, going out and getting short-term debt until FEMA pays us back. You know, there's, there's different options for that, so that is, or, I didn't want to mention, but taking it out of reserves. We just increased reserves, I, I don't know the, I want to take it out of...
Not recommended.
Not recommended, but it is a, it is an option. Yeah, it is an option. So those are, those are some of the reasons why the, you see those total revenues growing quite a bit within the General Fund. On the expenditure side, of course, under capital outlay, the 1.8 million, Veterans Park. Grants and aids went up a little bit. We, we did have some debt service we had to add, that is for the new phone system. But you can see under operating expenditures, inter-fund transfers, as well as personnel services, that is for all of the, the Board of County Commissioners expenses. We did decrease those where we could, and, so again, the increase in reserves, it's showing, you know, we're starting the year with 6.3 million, ending the year with 6.3 million, so the budget is balanced without use of reserves, and that was a, a large portion of that increase, that 5.4 million, including the entire amount of, of that in Next slide, 59, does show, again, it's a pie chart breakdown of all of those various revenues that was in the top half of that table. So it shows you the different categories, just in a, in a visual format. Slide 60 shows the expenditures by category, again, in a, in a visual format, pie chart breakdown, you know, personnel of 19% of the General Fund, operating 16%, those various things. Slide 61, this is all of these expenditures broken down by department, so it shows it in a little bit different format. Again, I sorted it from largest to smallest, so of course, the, the transfers with the constitutional officers is, is the largest portion of the General Fund budget, reserves at 6.3 million being the next largest. You'll see Parks and Recreation did increase 1.8 million, that is because of Veterans Park. But as you can see, for, for most of the other departments in the General Fund, we did decrease the, the budget for, for those departments. So slide 61 shows the, the first half of all of the departments, and slide 62 shows the next half of all of the various departments. And also, I put this in, in pie chart formats, probably pretty hard to see from out there because there's so many different departments, but just wanted to be able to show in, in visual format the breakdown of, of all of these various departments and really what they make up of the General Fund. You know, across the top is the majority of the different departments that are under 1% of the General Fund budget, you know? Human Resources is only .38% of the budget. Purchasing is .35% of the budget. Emergency Services is .41% of the budget. So, you know, in relation to the, to the total General Fund as a whole, a lot of departments... to the, to the total general fund as a whole, a lot of departments, um, are, are very, very small in the, uh, in the grand scheme of, of, of things in relation to the general fund. Um...
And Matt, not only are they small, they look very lean, frankly.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Those, well, those are, those are the departments that, that we had control over. So, um, looking at the table, you can see the, the amount that, that we were able to, um, to cut out of those budgets. We spent, Mr. Suggs said, we spent a significant amount of time going through these budgets, trying to, um, to, to cut costs where we could.
And it wasn't easy.
It, it definitely was not easy. As Mr. Suggs, again, he said we spent a significant amount of time going through the budget to, uh, to try to find, um, savings where we could. So. Slide 64, um, kinda shows the summary. Again, uh, you know, that, that 8.7 million dollar increase in both revenues and expenditures, primarily due to the inclusion of the entire amount of reserves. That was 5.4 million. Um, the transfers to the constitutional officers did increase by 2.2 million, and the Veterans Park was 1.8. So that was, um, that is more than 8.7, and we were able to cut back some of these other costs. We did decrease personnel and operating costs by, um, almost 375,000, and we decreased, um, transfers to other funds of about 550,000. So, and that is, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we, we go any further, again, uh, you just saw a two-hour presentation of what we've been working on for the last several weeks here at the county administration office for the benefit of you five elected officials, our constitutional officers, and our, and our citizens of Putnam County. Uh, again, uh, I will say that, that last slide that had all the breakdowns of the different departments on there, you know, that's, I'm gonna steal a phrase from Mr. Reynolds. He had an epiphany when he put that slide together, because when you look at just how many of our funds are less than 1% in the general fund, and for us to be able to go through the two previous slides and see all the red ink on those, those two slides, shows you just the level of effort that went into putting this budget together this year. And I would be remiss, as a county administrator, if I didn't tell you that, um, during the process of, of last year to this year, uh, looking at 120 million dollar budget and thinking that, well, if the county commissioners, all they want to do is try to find 3 or 4 million dollars to, to cut out of their budget to lower their millage rate and put some reserves back in 120 million dollar budget, that should not be that difficult to do. But I'm going to tell you something. The staff that you had in place last year with Ms. Papel and Mr. Manning both, uh, uh, trying to keep the ship afloat as well as move it forward, done an excellent job for you last year. It may have not appeared as though because it was a difficult time for everybody last year, but I'm going to sit here today as your county administrator and tell you, they've done a phenomenal job for you five, as well as the constitutions, as well as this community, because it was not that easy to find, uh, money for us to be able to, to reduce this budget. I think after, um, uh, like I said, about 200 hours of meetings, uh, preparation on this budget, uh, we found about 700-plus thousand dollars that we could take out, uh, this coming year. And when you go back and look at all the less than 1%ths, that means that we did everything we could do. Uh, we've, we've put on a hiring freeze. We've put on a spending freeze, uh, when we, when we met with our department heads, uh, so that we could try to get this under control. And I think what we have found, and the department heads found, is that, you know, they all have...
Matt, before you turn that off, I'm not done. I'm just waiting on him to finish.
Yes, sir. I'm, I had another slide. Uh, I'm gonna open it. I had some different millage scenarios just to show you what, a, a decrease in the, the general fund budget, what that means as a, as a millage decrease. So let me get down here to it.
Commissioner Turner, I didn't mean to, uh, to, to jump in there, but I, just before we got to the recommendations of where we're at today, it was, again, an opportunity for you folks to know that, uh, you are, you are already headed in the right direction, and that's, that was the work of your previous folks. And, uh, and I was, I'm just as excited as I can be about how we're moving this thing forward and bringing something to you folks to look at today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Really.
Mr. Turner.
Okay. Could we go back to slide number 58?
Sure.
58. 001, general fund.
Okay.
Uh, down three from the bottom, we've got the reserves that we built back up to 6,314,000.
Yes, sir.
Basically, we went up, um, 5.4 million dollars in one year. I understand that that's carrying it forward, the stuff that y'all used to not carry forward.
Yeah.
My question, let me get to my question before you get defensive on me. Okay. How much of that 5.4 million dollars in addition was actual reserves from, from this year? In other words, how mu- how much did we actually increase the reserves off of this budget if you'd have been doing it like you used to do it? So how much, do you know what that number would be?
1, 1.5 million. We, we started at 4.8. We're getting to 6.3.
Okay. So basically, but, okay. So basically, with that being the general fund, if we decided to not increase our revenues at a heartier pace as what you have budgeted, then we could possibly, uh, drop the amount of budgeted rev- of, of, uh, budgeted reserve increase and then take a higher and, and take a lower ta- and take a lower tax rate? Is that correct or not?
Yes, sir, you could. If you reduce the millage rate without making any changes on the expenditure side, you would have to pull it from reserves. So it would...
And so instead, like, just say, for instance, in, in generalities, if, if we're 600,000 dollars a part or something, when we go through all the motions or whatever that amount is. So we would basically take that amount from, we would, we would increase the reserves at a slower pace, but we could take a lower tax rate. Is that correct?
Well, looking at it from just the budgeting, budgeting standpoint of next fiscal year, you would, you would start at 6.3. So if you used some of your reserves, you would be decreasing reserves in, in that fiscal year. But I see what you're trying to say is you're using some of the 1.5 million increase...
Yeah.
...to, to offset...
Yeah, because they would no longer be reserves. In other words, you're not using your reserves if you don't budget the reserves to start with. Do you understand what I'm saying? We're not using the reserves, but, we're, because we're just budgeting for less of an increase in reserves for next year. So we're not actually using reserves. We, if the board decided to do that, they could take a less tax increase and just move their reserves forward a little slower than what we would, would rather do, perhaps.
Yes, but, uh, looking at it from a, from a, from a timing standpoint, because the fiscal year starts on October 1st, we're estimating to have 6.3. So it's, it's not like, we, we can't reduce the balance forward and say we're taking 600 or 700 of it and using it as a, as a supplement in the following year. It, you'd have to show it as 6.3 million coming in, and then if you're using 600 of it, it would be 5.7 million in reserves at the end of the year. So it would be decreasing reserves from the, from the beginning of the year. So it's kind of, it'd be like a two-year story. You'd have to say, well, we increased it one point. We added 1.5 in one year, and we're using 600...
We're increasing it from now to then. We're increasing it a million and a half. So if we di- if we only increased it 900,000, then we only increased it 900, but there's 600,000 we can use to, to budget with, correct? We would just grow our reserves slower.
Well, within next fiscal year's budget, we're, we're not budgeting to add anything to reserves right now. It's flat. Starts the year at 6.3, ends the year at 6.3. So it would, it would be that the 1.5 million we're adding to reserves is just in this fiscal year. That'll end September 30th. And that's been due to, um, attrition, as Mr. Suggs said, uh, you know, holding positions that come open, um, holding expenditures, uh, because we did, we went through the budget and we looked at what we were projecting to spend for this year. And if there was anything that, that department heads could forego on, that's what Mr. Suggs was referring to. You know, we, we came up with a, with an estimated projection of what we're going to spend this year so that we could see what we thought would happen in reserves, so that we would know what we're going to start next year with. That's where the, the 1.5 million, that's within this fiscal year.
Understand. Okay. That conversation's to be continued.
Let me, not to put a monkey wrench in it, but I have to. Where does that put us, Susan, with the auditor's generals', uh, request to build our reserves from the audit? Stacy?
I don't remember them specifically asking us to build our reserves. I, I think that's just something that we all have talked about over and over.
They dinged us on it, though. They dinged us on it. We were, we were low, and I thought there, I don't think it was a statutory required amount, but there was a ratio, is what I'm...
We have come close to falling below our self-imposed fund balance policy.
Okay, self-imposed.
Yes. That's, that's a policy that, that the board, a board, you know, not, not necessarily the five of you...
10%, I believe, right.
...had set a certain amount that we have to maintain in reserves.
It was 10. Matt, you're right. It was 10.
I think it was 10, 10%. So if you look at the...
10% of operating revenues or something like that.
Yep. And you look at the, the, uh, general fund this year, 48 million, 10% is 4.8. So it's...
Right there.
It was, it was right there.
So we, we teetered on the edge of it this year. I don't think we fell below. By my calculations, we did not, but I was only looking at board. I wasn't hacking in all the constitutions.
So I'd like to continue that conversation too, Commissioner Turner.
All right. Well, it's also a policy that's set by this board, too. I read the audit. In fact, I read it twice, 'cause I kept having people tell me, oh, that's an audit item. Anything, oh, that's an audit item. So I read it, and I read it again. And so I don't remember reading anything in there about that we had a minimum reserve amount that was set by that audit. I think it's more of a general, general accounting practices, good requirements for general accounting practices, and, and there's averages across the state. There's a lot of other things. So I'm not for a minute suggesting we don't have good reserves to, to be physically responsible. But by the same token, we might be careful that we don't raise the reserves so fast that we're missing something else we need to do, or that we're charging too much tax because we're trying to raise our reserves too fast. And that's just the only thing that I want to make sure of. I have one other thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may, on slide 64, Matt, it's still showing the 1.8 in there for the Veterans Park, uh, bid. And I noticed in an earlier slide that we had the 450,000 or whatever that number was for our portion of the, uh, of the grant, our matching portion of the grant.
Better place. Yes, sir.
Well, as you well know, this weekend workshop, we came up with a new estimate on it that was in the four, basically in the same range to do the whole project as our cut was before.
Yep. That is correct.
So how, how is that going to affect the budget when we take that other 1.4 million dollars out of the budget? I know it was better, you had it in the Better Place. So does that just mean we've got a million four back in there?
Wouldn't impact that more.
Yes, it, it, we will take, take it out on the revenue side. Let me get back to the, to the table, and I will, I'll point it out. Um, let's see, slide 58. Uh, you'll see in the top portion, um, debt proceeds, uh, the 1.366 million, 875. We will take that out of the budget once the bids come back in and, and we actually know what, what the cost will be. We will take the debt proceeds out, um, and then on the expenditure side under capital outlay, we will take it out. So it's, it's a direct offset. It, it won't...
It's wash.
Yeah, it, it's a wash.
My thought, although I have not discussed it with Susan, my thought is that we would spend the entire cost of the project out of BPP.
The 455, correct.
And then if we got a FEMA reimbursement, that money would come into BPP.
75%.
I'd have not put FEMA money in BPP.
I know that.
It might need to go to the capital projects fund then.
Rather do that with the capital projects fund.
Yeah. So we'd be transferring the entire amount to the capital projects fund, and then when we got reimbursed...
Right. And, and these will be some of the changes that you'll probably see by September.
Uh, let's back up to that conversation there a minute. So you're saying that we, to take it out of BPP, and she's saying, nah, not so much. And so...
At, at, at some point, we're gonna get 75% of our costs back.
I don't have a problem paying the expenditures out of Better Place Plan, but we don't want to put the revenue in Better Place Plan because that is a restricted, specific revenue source.
Basically, we need to pay it out of the, the recreation or whatever other fund that it is, where the money can go back in there afterwards.
We would reimburse it.
Yes.
Yes. And can I clarify the fund balance policy? Since you will get your CAFER today, Staples has finished the books. Um, at 9:3017, the fund balance policy said that our fund balance should be 10% of general fund revenues. At 9:3017, it was only 10.9%. So we, you know, every year for the last several years, it has dropped and dropped and dropped. So that's your fund balance policy. Does that help?
So, so...
Can you repeat that?
We were okay.
We were okay. The, it's, the fund balance policy says that we will keep 10%. This is general fund. So we take the total revenues for the general fund, and we calculate 10% of that, and that's what our policy says that we should have on hand.
Okay.
We were at 10.9.
Self-imposed.
Yes.
Okay. I want to, are you, follow up on Commissioner Turner's question. The, let's say we, we, it's a washout. We take that money out. Uh, no more revenue, no more expenses. But then we plug a new number in. Our new number was going to be less of the county's por- portion of Veterans Park. How does that affect our budget?
It will affect Better Place because, say, the total project's 455,000, and our share's 25% of it, then your Better Place share is really only 100,000 and some change.
Or wherever we take the money from.
Correct, yeah. If, if, yeah.
So it's really not going to affect us. We're not going to see anything else come from it.
The benefit would be to Better Place.
300,000 go back into Better Place, but the, from the budget's current budget.
Well, that's what I was asking, but I'm understanding...
Cause the 400 and, 438,000, I think, was our, was the new bid, and there's 455 in there right now. So our cut of the new one would be about 110,000 dollars. So 110 would come out, but the rest of, but the rest up to the 455 that's budgeted in there would go back into the Better Place to be spent towards more roads or more whatever.
Correct.
Mr. Manning?
Yeah, yeah. I think, to clarify what Susan was saying, you should, even though we may spend that out of Better Place or a lesser amount out of Better Place, the Better Place is very specific on, on the funds that go into that, that fund, where the money comes from. So when we get the FEMA reimbursement, um, we, we wouldn't be putting it back into the Better Place Fund. But that's not to say that you couldn't use that reimbursement for projects that you would have otherwise used Better Place money for.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
I'm done at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Would like to make a comment when we get to that point.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
There was, there was one last slide. I didn't have it in the presentation that I had open, but it's, uh, slide 65, um, on the handouts. And it just shows, um, various millage scenarios. So if we were able to reduce on the expenditure side, uh, by those amounts, what it would do to the, to the millage rate. You know, as, as it, uh, we presented earlier in the budget, right now, in putting the, all that information we just talked about together, the millage was 9.6622. And so I, I wrote the millage out to the side of, you know, if you're able to, to come up with 354,843 dollars in savings, the millage could be 9.5622. So that'd be a, a .1 mill drop. And I just put in, you know, various other figures in there. To get to 9.5, it would be almost 576,000.
Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Suggs mentioned in the first comment that he gave that this is still a work in progress.
Absolutely.
And you're still sharpening your pencil, as I remember the comment.
Yes, yes.
There, there are some state revenues. We still haven't received yet.
And my fingers are bleeding, is the comment that was given to me. Uh, we could still see this go down and go down and go down. And come September, we very well might be at that, at one of these levels down here that we were really... So, so I want to say this. We can accomplish four things with this budget. We're going to reduce solid waste. We could see a lower millage. We'll see a balanced budget and increase reserves.
Correct.
I'm telling you, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say this. Outstanding job. Outstanding job. And, uh, thank you for all the hard, I know you stayed up, both of you, and Mr. Suggs.
Definitely wasn't just me. It was everybody.
And department heads. I mean, I know y'all have stayed up and worked and worked these budgets. And you haven't skimped on the citizens of Putnam County. You've just cut some efficiencies. You carried reserves in. I applaud you for doing the work.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just about to bust, and I couldn't help.
Well, I'm glad you did, and I agree with his sentiments completely. I think y'all have done a fabulous job. And I appreciate the fact that while you, you brought this budget to us today in the best... brought this budget to us today in the best shape that you could bring it in, that you said right up front and all the way through the whole presentation, that we're not done yet. That we've still got some work to do, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do it and help us find the cuts to get on down to where we kind of want to, want to be, or where, where our target was, because it's not exactly there yet. Did a great job, and I don't want to diminish the fact of that at all. But I do appreciate the fact that y'all are, are willing to continue working and trying to get it where we want it to be. Thank you.
Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, because I appreciate the accolades for sacrifice. They have done marvelous stuff. As we said in the beginning of the presentation day as well, throughout the course of the last nine to 10 months, we're working diligently to get us to where we want to be. We all know that we had a target goal in mind. We're looking, if we were to come back on the 24th of, of this month, when we have to set our maximum millage rate, will you see where we need to start at? We've got from, from July 24th to the first meeting in September to continue working on this number here, to get our costs down, to drive that millage rate down. And that is, that's the goal of, of your staff, that's the goal of the constitutionals. I can't say this enough times, that we're continuing to work with our constitutionals. I believe, uh, I believe we're going to be able to get much closer to where we're, where we want to be than what we are today. Uh, that's not a guarantee, and that's not a promise, but that is, that is a guarantee and a promise, is that we are continuing to work closely with our partners to do everything we can to drive that, that millage rate further down for this fiscal year, starting October 1. And, uh, so, uh, we're going to continue those talks, and I believe we're heading in the right direction, and hopefully we'll get closer to the, uh, the, the target that we had set prior to this meeting today.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's definitely less painful than last year's budget. Before I move to public comment, does any commissioners have any comments?
Just a couple of comments. As Chairman Goddard said, last year was tough. Uh, it was a very challenging year, and I want to commend, uh, the department heads, staff, Stacy and Stacy, for the work that you did do. And, and we knew that you were working as hard as you could with, with the department heads and the constitutionals to, to cut the, you know, cut the budget. But we had to raise the millage rate because that was the thing we had to do. But we made a promise, and Commissioner Turner, bless his heart, he sits in a commission chair for two months and has to vote to, to raise taxes.
That's right.
Which I know bothered him. It bothered all of us, but we knew that we, we would, would find a better way. And with Terry Suggs on board, Matt on board, continual work of Stacy Papel, and the department heads and everybody, that this is a product that we have, and hopefully we can continue to improve on it as we move forward. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for your work. Thank you.
If I could?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank everybody involved for this document. The transparency, the simplicity of it, it's, I think all the commissioners will agree, this is excellent. It's something we can use all year.
This is our PowerPoint kit.
Yeah, good job. I've never seen one like this, and it's, man, great job.
It's so much more, it's so much clearer than last year's, it's not even fun, it's not even comparable. I mean, you had to be a full-blown accountant and have a team of other accountants working for you to understand what went on last year. This year, it's clear and concise in a, in a, in a power presentation, and I, along with Commissioner Law, will appreciate that.
Yep, and any constituent that picks it up is going to be able to read it. Thank you. It's good, makes our job easier. Mr. Harv, Mr. Chair?
I, I do want to say one thing. I want to give kudos to our chairman, Commissioner Goddard, who took us on a field trip of Veterans Park. And, um, that was kind of an unorthodox meeting, um, but it was a public meeting, and we had court reporter there, and we toured that facility. And all minds up here worked together to see how we could lower that cost on that park and maintain that park. Chip has, I mean, Commissioner Law has a long history of that park, and Commissioner Turner has building knowledge, and Press Tompkins jumped in, and I've made contact with some concrete people, and everybody worked together to drive that cost down. And it looks like we might could bring it in for less than 500,000 to fix that park, unless we got a preliminary of 1.8 billion. So I tell you, Commissioner Goddard, it was unorthodox. We were in shorts and, and tennis shoes, but I can tell you what, it was productive. And thank you for getting us out of this chamber and to the area we needed to be at to solve the needs of Putnam County. So I want to give you kudos for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And it was enjoyable.
It was, it was fun.
I enjoy working with this commission very well. Uh, if there is no other comments, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to public comment. Uh, any public that would like to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and try to limit to three minutes. Thanks.
Jeff Rawls, 1100 Car Street. Absolute kudos to you. You, all you guys did a great job. This is very easy to digest. Um, one of the first questions that came up was on the fund balance, does it include revenue this derived from landfill, the fund balance transfers?
On, on specifically which, which slide? It would have been just the amount shown in, I'd have to get all the way back to it, but just the amount shown in the fund, uh, the sanitation fund.
Forty-three, forty-four?
Yeah, let me get back up here to it so we can look at it.
Forty-one?
Yes, forty-one. The, the balance forward of 1.548 million is, that would, would have been everything, uh, charges for service is for the, I believe that's the tipping fee, the $44 a ton at the very top of that table.
Okay.
And then the special, permits fees and special assessments are the special assessments that are on property throughout the county. Those are the two revenue sources within that, within that fund. There's a small grant, intergovernmental.
This is an enterprise fund, so the, the fees are actually in the fund, not in the general fund, correct? They're not transferred out?
Correct.
On slide forty-one, I took the actual unrestricted fund balance at the beginning of this fiscal year, what we are expecting to have in revenues, less what we are expecting to have in expend, in expenses, to come up with the forecasted unrestricted fund balance in that fund at the beginning of next fiscal year.
That's the 1.5 million?
That's the 1.5 million.
Yes.
Okay, because the zero start I'll usually throw is your final.
I know, and, and the good thing about that is, and I forgot to mention it during the presentation, next year, you know, when we go through this, you know, the coming fiscal year budget will be in the left column, which will have all of the fund balance and then the font, so it'll, it'll be a lot easier to see.
We'll have a budget in actual, and then, and then we'll be able to see year over, year over year.
Correct, yes.
Um, so the next question is pretty much for everybody up here, including the county attorney, county administrator. Has this administration, the administrator, the attorney, anybody created an operating break-even for the landfill? Do we have a break, uh, an actual break-even amount? Has there been a break-even analysis ever been performed on our landfill?
I haven't done one, but I believe there was a study done prior to my arrival here that told us, or gave us an idea of what the cost estimate would be as far as revenues and a breakdown to, to be sufficient out there, be sustainable.
I have, I have seen the documentation on one that was done several years ago, but the, the estimates that were taken into account on that were based on the current amount of, of waste that was coming into the landfill. And it was at ninety tons a day, 110 tons a day, what, roughly whatever we're taking in right now. It didn't take into account any additional, uh, waste that may be coming in, so it was just based on the way it was operating at that point in time.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, we're also looking at, uh, the potential of going back out for, for an additional study done to show us what our costs would be with additional tonnages coming in, so we would know what that gate rate should be.
Yes.
So will that analysis be used to determine, um, the base rate for any, any additional refuse coming in? Um, I know that, uh, as, you know, as of yesterday's meeting, uh, there is a broker in play to bring in trash. Are we gonna, you, are we gonna get an, uh, do an assessment, get a, get a cap set on that prior to negotiating a contract? Are we going to go forward blindly, not knowing what the actual cost is?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jeff, there's not a broker in place yet. There's a, what we talked about in workshop yesterday was to sign a contract for a, for a, with a broker that would allow us to take or turn down anything that was offered to us by him. So it's not a contract that they can just bring us garbage. It's a contract that says they can offer us garbage, and if we decide to take it at that cost, we can or not.
The question is, well, is there or will there be an analysis that will be used to set?
We're trying to get one done now, yes.
So I'm, so the, the, the question, the answer I'm hearing is yes, there'll be an assessment that will be put into place prior to any negotiated contracts for receiving any, any, uh, refuse. Is that correct?
You're not.
Yeah, it's just an, it's a yes or no question. We're either going to have an assessment and use it, or we're not. It's a simple yes or no, seriously.
We're going to have an assessment. I'm not going to tell you that we're not going to take any garbage or not take any garbage at any given time. That would be up to the administrator to make that decision.
Okay.
I can't, I can't answer that question.
Well, at, at the end of the day, the commissioners have the fiduciary responsibility. You can't push that off to them.
I understand. This is a budget workshop, not a landfill workshop.
I understand that the landfill is going to be a large part of our budget.
I understand, but this is a budget workshop.
I heard you say, $6 million, we can buy a lot of stuff. I think that's a direct quote from you. A lot of stuff with $6 million. So, next question. Of the 409,000 dollars in the tourist development fund, this is slide, or budget number 131, um, I don't know what slide number it was like.
Yeah, it's back up here.
The twenties, I believe.
To it.
The cost center was 131.
Yeah, thirty-four.
Slide thirty-four, yep. Um, of the 409,000 dollars in tourist development funds, um, how much is that, is contracted out?
Of the 409 of the operating expenditures? Um, I would have to pull up the line item detail, I believe, Stacy has that open. We'd have to pull up the line item detail to see what that exact amount is. While she's looking that up, you could ask.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just, just for, uh, to try to move this along a little bit, I believe Mr. Rawls and I have, have been in contact with each other, uh, this week. We're trying to schedule a meeting for this coming week. Uh, Mr. Rawls, if you'd like, we'd be more than happy to sit down with Mr. Rawls, myself, Mr. Reynolds, and Ms. Papel at that meeting, and we can go over this in greater detail.
Okay, that'd probably be best, right?
And actually be able to probably answer his, his questions a little more completely than what we would be able here today, and give him the information that he is seeking, because that is the role that we play, is to answer to our constituents. But I think, uh, in a sit-down meeting, uh, where we could actually lay everything out on the table with all our backup materials and all, be better prepared to answer the questions.
I think that's a great suggestion, as long as you guys have the edification of knowing what's discussed, because, again, what you vote on puts, puts you at risk personally. I told you the day, no fees and smis fees and non-fees is in play here. So you really have to make your decisions, you take your deliberations, and consider everything, not just what we have right now, but, um.
Yeah.
You're, you're correct. That would, that would be good.
The, the administration cost in the tourist development fund is 10% of the revenues. Right now, it's 40,850 dollars.
That's the contracted cost?
I don't have that.
That's, yeah, I don't have a copy of the contract, but that is what is in the budget, is 10%.
Matt, Mr. Reynolds, okay.
Sure.
These questions, the questions that you have, are these going to be questions that are going to be presented to Mr. Suggs and the rest of the staff?
No, no, this is, we moved on tourist development, and this is completely different.
These are also going to be questions.
All these questions, Mr. Chairman, can be presented to myself and as well as the financial officers, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, I think, I think, I think they really need to be presented, um, in the public right now, and here's, here's the reason. Um, there is a contract that was signed in 1999 that's not been ratified or changed since 1999. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming you guys are all familiar with it regarding tourist development?
Okay, uh.
This is not, this is also not a workshop on the chamber of commerce.
Do you have any public comment?
These are, these are, this is, this is the public, this is the public's opportunity to have question and answers regarding the, uh, the budget.
Actually, no, that would be when we present the budget on the 24th.
Correct. This is a workshop where we're just discussing, was there?
Right. The, the question is, I'm, I'm confused as to how we're spending 409,000 dollars. It just says operating expenses. How are we spending that 409,000 dollars? That's the question.
Again, those, those are items that they're going to give you specifics on.
Are they going to give it to you specifically, so you can vote on this?
If that's given to you, we'll see it.
Okay, well, thank God I'm up here asking questions. Okay, so the next question.
What is the cost to get to 100% of services that Mr. Tompkins referred to over in East
Park? He said we're about 40% right now.
Jeff, Jeff, I'm, I, you've run way over your three minutes. This is a public comment. Now, all these answers.
Public questions.
These are public questions, and these will be presented to Mr. Suggs and the rest of the staff, and yes, we'll, we'll get those. But we, we do need to cut this, we, we need to finish up here. If you have a specific question, uh, that you can answer pretty quickly, ask that one, but other than that, all those are going to be going back to their office.
I, I just assumed these answers would be able to be, uh, chatted about right now. So just so we're clear, the, the appropriate time for me to come publicly and ask these questions is what date?
If, if you have questions, it would be better if you, you sent them in so that we could give you, so we could research instead of answering off the cuff, that we would have time to research.
So when, when, when is the, the public meeting where I can come in and have the questions answered publicly?
We're going to present the county administrator budget.
Okay.
On the 24th, and ask the commissioners to set a millage rate, and then we're going to have a public hearing on the budget, uh.
First meeting in September, and then a second one.
It'll actually be the Monday night before the first meeting, because the school board's having theirs on Tuesday night, and then the Saturday.
So September is when the public will be able to come in and ask questions?
The public hearings, the public hearings are in September.
And that's when we can ask questions?
You can ask questions, and you'll be able to present all your questions to Mr. Suggs at this meeting.